Oh, yeah. Yeah. Okay. I'll test it. We're going to see if it's live. Six seconds in.
What was that?
So, we're not coming to executive session.
Marissa?
Nope.
Close meeting.
Well, we have to come back out.
Oh, you can't tell.
I know.
Just tell them I'm coming back.
Colin, get out of your uniform. Are you on my duty to go and take that place?
Decisions were made.
I hope that's you.
Hook up to Wi-Fi and it's usually good enough.
That makes more sense. There we go. They're a little bit more centered now.
Are you done with this?
Yeah.
There's more, too.
Oh, I didn't see that.
I just thought you had probably.
Where does it say about the federal thing? It's just up here.
Um, it's right here. It helps with lighting a little bit.
Okay.
I do enjoy seeing the delay. Oh, I just did that. Right.
Okay. Six o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to thank everybody for joining us this evening and please join us in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So, we'll move to the next item on the agenda and that is the approval of the agenda. Does everybody have anything to add or take away from the agenda this evening?
No.
No? Okay. Approval. Agenda is approved. So, now we open it up to public comment. Please, this is the portion of the meeting where you can comment on anything that's not currently on the agenda or does not require public hearings such as item, agenda item number five or eight. Does anybody have anything to comment on? Any comments for something not on the agenda? No? Okay. So, now I go to report of mayor and city commissioners and we'll start with the new commissioner, Commissioner Huxell.
I just wanted to say that I'm excited to be here for my first full meeting and spent the last couple of weeks taking a deep dive into getting a better understanding of how the city works and operates and still have a lot to learn, but I can say I'm impressed with what I've seen.
You're welcome. Here's your backup. Okay. Go down here to Commissioner Ian Horst.
I'd just like to note that Lakeside Elementary School is putting on its performances of Frozen Junior this Friday evening and Saturday at 2:00 PM. Should be a lot of fun. The costumes are excellent, so I hope you all can make it.
I want to thank in advance our city clerk Karen Brower and her team with regards to the upcoming elections. We have a primary coming up a week from Tuesday, March 10th. Absentee ballots are already available. We have some great information on the city's website and Facebook page with regards to that and I know that they're doing a great job of answering people's questions with regards to that. I think the one question I've heard a lot the last couple of days from a couple of people regards, with regards to what happens if I voted absentee but the candidate I voted for has withdrawn. There is a process where you can spoil your ballot and potentially vote again. I will not get into the details of how you do that and what the deadlines are, but Ms. Brower and the other people at the front desk here are more than happy to help you with that if you have questions about that.
Thank you.
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight. Doug, welcome back.
Thanks. This evening.
Okay. I would just like to say one thing quickly. I'd like to encourage everyone that wants to be more informed, completely informed on anything that's going on in the city to please go to the city's website, eastgr.org/signup. There you can choose what alerts you want to receive from our e-newsletter to specific committee and commission agendas sent straight to your email, phone, or both. So, please go to the city's website and sign up to stay up to date. Thanks. Okay. Then we're moving on to, does anybody have anything else? Okay. Moving on to item number five, presentation of redevelopment-ready community certification baseline report and that will be introduced by Alec Mizikar.
We have Pablo here from the MEDC to give us our presentation on our baseline report for the RRC certification. And the memo that I prepared with his presentation, I kind of give a summary of where we've been from very beginning to now and where we have to continue and kind of outlines some of the items that he'll be talking about in his presentation on that we need to complete in order to get our certification and kind of how, what we're currently doing and how we're going to move forward. So, with that, I'll let Pablo go ahead.
Hey, here, commissioners. Thanks for having me tonight. Thanks for making room on the busy agenda and having me come out from Lansing. I like to get out in Lansing when I can. Karen, I'll let you know when we can move forward.
Just point at me when you're ready for the next slide.
All right. Sounds good. So, my name is Pablo Mahano. I'm the Senior Redevelopment-Ready Communities Planner at the MEDC. I've been there for about two and a half years. Prior to that, I've worked as a city planner for the city of East Lansing. So, the MEDC is the economic development arm for the state of Michigan. We really have three departments, which is pure Michigan. You've seen that slogan. You've seen it on license plates. You've seen it coming into Michigan or leaving. And the community development, that's where the Michigan Main Street team is housed, Redevelopment-Ready Communities is housed, CRP team, and now the State Historic Preservation Office is housed within the Community Development Department. And business development, they're mainly focused on industrial sites, international attraction, recruitment, trying to keep those businesses here in our lovely state of Michigan. I can move to the next slide. So, the Redevelopment-Ready Communities Program, that's really the first step that you take engaging into the program in order to get access to being prioritized for community development incentives that we have. So, our strategic focus is really to empower communities so they can proactively shape their future that's built on a solid planning, zoning, and economic development foundation. Next slide. So, I can say here, the key ingredients to community vitality are talent, place, and business. Talent, whether you're a young professional, you're a seasoned professional, you want to go to a place to work, you want to go to a place to live, you want to go to a place to explore. So, that talent wants that place. That place needs business. And that, those businesses are what attracts the talent. So, it's a constant loophole that we see running around across the state of Michigan. Next slide. So, these are the guiding principles for the Redevelopment-Ready Communities Program. We're really, it's a self-help program and I like to think of RRC as a tool. It only works if the community uses it to their advantage. So, the key things for RRC is efficiency, transparency, and predictability. So, we're looking at all your development review processes, your zoning, community adopted plans to ensure they're being transparent, we're making sure your development review process is efficient, and we're making sure it's predictable. So, we're seeing how the community is activating your partnerships and how proactive you're being in assisting maybe the typical applicant that wants to come in and pull a building permit for a roof or maybe they want to open up a business or an applicant that when it comes to develop a site in East Grand Rapids. Next slide. So, certification process is three steps. So, step one in short is somebody has completed the six best practice trainings, they've completed a self-evaluation, and the city submits a resolution to engage into the program. Second step is essentially I have gone through the six best practices, I've evaluated you, measured against them, and I'm here to present the baseline report to you. Third step, I can explain a little later. So, right now, there's roughly 280 communities that are engaged in RRC. I work with communities in regions two, three, and four, so I have about 81 communities myself. In region four, you can see there's a couple of communities that are already certified in the program, so Alligan, Grand Haven, Grand Rapids, Hudsonville, Middleville, and the city of Muskegon. So, these are the six RRC best practices that you were measured against and within the six, there are about 41 criteria. And so, community plans and public outreach, that's your master plan, that's a public participation plan, that's downtown plan. Zoning regulations, we're just looking through your zoning ordinance, development review process, recruitment or education, you already showed that today, but advertising about the opportunities you have to inform the public of upcoming opportunities, which is great. Community prosperity, economic development, marketing, and then lastly redevelopment-ready sites. So, this is a snapshot and it's really a snapshot in time of when I did your evaluation, the community was 38% complete and the yellow are items that maybe you're missing one or two items and red, it's missing. And maybe it's missing because it's not documented or it's just something that you do and I don't know about it and that's just constant communication that I'm going to have with Alec as we're working towards certification for East Grand Rapids. Next slide. So, already meeting again, an up-to-date master plan, zoning ordinance has all the necessary information, allocate funding for training, you have qualified intake professional, annual review of the fee schedule, and board members receive packets when they're like a planning commission or zoning or yourselves having something, an actual material that you can make educated decisions when a site plan comes up. Next slide. Making good progress. Again, that's ultimately finishing that zoning ordinance that you have, developing an easy-to-follow flow chart of the development review process. This is where we talk about transparency and predictability and just showing what it takes from step A to step E on going through that site plan review process, a quick visual, developing a project tracker and creating a feedback mechanism for the opportunity for citizens to come and tell you, well, there's a barrier here, maybe you want to consider streamlining that process, maybe that process could be avoided. And then adding items to the website as they become completed. And opportunities for improvement, so this is developing overarching economic development strategy, developing a public participation plan, a unified marketing strategy, developing desired skill sets for development-related boards. So, at times, you know, we get asked a lot of kinds of, what is a planning commission? Or, well, it's a zoning board of appeals. Easiest thing, so if you like buildings, if you like codes, if you like architecture, you know, planning commission, this may be the perfect board for you. That's something you can consider. So, looking at it in those terms. So, this is the, actually, the third step, which is you've seen the report, you agree with the recommendations that are in the report, the community passes a second resolution to proceed with the program, and then I'll be working with Alec on a quarterly progress reports to make sure that there's constant progress moving forward with the RRC until you've become certified and you meet all the greens and then we can talk about that a little later. So, the public value, there's technical assistance match funding, so if there's something big on the economic development or marketing or maybe later on you want to update your master plan, there's 75-25 match up to $30,000 that we provide to communities. It's always continued technical assistance, so training opportunities, webinars, RRC workshops. I'm holding one in Holland in September. We're talking about housing, talking about economic development, and we're talking about small businesses. Prioritizing for community development funding tools and communities that are engaged in RRC are prioritized for those community development incentive tools. It's a third-party review really of your, these are best practices when it comes to planning and economic development, so it's really just looking, general housekeeping of your process. Next slide. So, again, you can look at all the resources we have on myplace.org. We have an excellent library that we tell communities that you can look at different communities across the state of Michigan, what they've done to accomplish the best practices, and you can R and D. And by R and D, we say rip off and duplicate. Next slide. So, my name's Pablo Mahano and I will answer any questions that you have.
Right. Mr. Mahano, thanks for coming. I have a quick question for you. Can you give any recent examples? I know that the types of incentive programs that are available, you know, change from year to year based on funding and legislative priorities and what have you, but can you give any examples from the last year or two, especially maybe for some of our other communities in your region? You mentioned a few that are nearby to us where they've been able to take advantage of because they were redevelopment-ready certified. Do you know offhand, can you think of anything like that?
I can't think of the exact funding tool that worked, but the city of Hudsonville was able to use, I believe, CRP money to be able to add that additional story that they needed to make some additional housing units.
Okay.
I would search that. I need to get back and get that. Can't remember offhand because there's so many projects that we go through.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mahano, what is the typical length of time that a community that is going through the kind of certification process, if they get to the point where we're at where we've got 38% and another 28% that's in progress, what kind of timeline would be typical for getting to that full certification?
Really depends on the community and how fast you want to move forward. Like I said, maybe some of the items that are yellow can turn green right away by just putting something on a piece of paper that says we do so-and-so. Hudsonville did it in three to four months. There's communities that have been doing it for three years and are getting close to certification. Really depends on the staff capacity that you have and the willingness to work through the program and, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? When exactly did we start the process?
We signed a resolution of desired participation in August of 2018.
Okay.
And a couple of months ago, we received our baseline report. And so, a little over a year ago.
Okay.
Yeah, I think something I wanted to mention that Alec had brought up and I forgot to mention it during the presentation, but the best practice six, the redevelopment-ready sites. So, once you've done one through five, we actually have a new team called the Redevelopment Services Team and there's some pre-development assistant that comes to that. So, that's identifying maybe a parking lot that you have, maybe it's an empty storefront, maybe it's an empty upstairs that maybe could use some usage, get back on more money on the tax roll. So, they come in, they identify sites, they do design-build packages, they do developer days, they try to help you turn over any possible sites or what is a priority to the city. So, that's another benefit.
And that these are properties that are not necessarily owned by the city?
They don't have to be as long as you have an agreement and they're willing to do it and they know that.
Anybody else? Any questions? No? Thank you so much. Thanks so much for that. So, the next item on the agenda, item number six, is consider request to approve the division of land at 1549 Lake Grove with an introduction by Alec Mizikar.
So, we have a request today from the applicant of Scott and Jill Bowander of 1549 Lake Grove to split their property into two conforming parcels as follows. Currently, the parent parcel is at the intersection of Albert Drive and Lake Grove, front on Lake Grove, right here being the front of the house. And so, they're looking to split off the, what looked like the rear yard of their property to front on Albert Drive. The new parcel, parcel A, will have a width of 72 feet and total area of just over 7,700 square feet, so meeting the requirements for the R2 zoning district. Going through some of the standards of review. It does meet the requirements, the new lot would meet the requirements for the R2 zoning district. The existing lot, the width does not meet the requirements of the R2 zoning district. It's just under, it's around 69 feet. No zoning variance is required since the split is not technically making a new nonconformance. It's just the existing nonconformance. The new parcel will have adequate easements on Albert Drive for public utilities, hookups. Attached with your memo, there is a lot size comparison for surrounding 500 feet. Both parcels would fall within the average in the area, not being too large or too small compared to parcels within 500 feet. And I did have a printout from Regis to show relation of widths as well. So, there's a map that's titled Zoomed in Parcel View of 1549 Lake Grove Avenue. There are no natural features such as floodplains or wetlands, anything like that to keep in mind for this split. And from our review, it won't place any new demands on public services. So, any questions? I'd be, feel free to answer them.
So, that piece that says remainder, that would just ultimately be their backyard? Is that what that is or would that be?
Correct. Yeah, the proposed split is this line right here.
Uh-huh. Okay.
And I guess I forgot to mention, too, a needed condition for this approval would be for the applicant to move those two sheds that they have on the property into a conforming location.
Okay.
But I'm sorry, Commissioner Hamrick?
Well, I was just, I just wanted to clarify that where it says remainder on this diagram, that that's what, that would be their backyard, basically?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. And then that remainder parcel would meet requirements for building coverage, lot coverage, setbacks, and that sort of thing.
And I'm sorry, you said that they are planning to move the sheds to put them into compliance?
That would need to be a condition of approval.
Okay.
I guess you could make a condition, too, that the applicant comes in for a zoning variance. If that's something, you know, you have the temperature for, if the applicant wants to, but they would need to be moved to be conforming.
Sure. Okay.
And that's, both of those structures would need to be moved?
Correct. Yes. Because you can't have a, technically, you can't have an accessory structure on and then do lot without a principal structure.
Right. Any questions? Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, now we will open it up to public comment and we let the applicant come forward first, so.
I have a confession. I've lived here for 30 years and this is my first city commission meeting, so shame on me.
Well, welcome.
But I'll follow it. Thank you. I'll follow it with a deep expression of gratitude for what we take for granted, but we're big proponents and whenever my neighbors complain of their taxes, I say, look at what we have. So, I'm a very happy, satisfied customer. Just a little backstory why we're doing this. My wife and I are old as dirt. We describe ourselves now that we're in our late 60s and she is a fabulous gardener, drive by sometime, but it's getting harder and harder to maintain this perimeter garden over all this area. And so, she said the other day, or a couple of years ago, I don't know if I can keep doing this. And we'd like to stay. We'd like to stay for at least 10 more years before we go into the home and we enjoy living here. So, we thought, well, people have said, why don't you sell the lot? And I said, well, I don't think it is a lot. So, we have gone through this process, first and foremost, just to find out if it is a capable lot. It would help us stay in the place and just have a beautiful, smaller garden. If you think our backyard is back, you should see the one next door to us on Lake Grove. That is a really weird lot. I don't know how that happened. But anyway, that would be our plan. I would also say, you know, that if we are to, if we were to sell it, we would be pretty careful to sell it to a builder that we had confidence in, would build a house that would fit well in the neighborhood and we wouldn't mind looking at. We've even had friends of ours who said, man, if you ever do that, we might want to buy it. So, that's kind of the context for it and, you know, we're aware. On the shed issue, this is not a request, the little house that's right there, that is a playhouse that I actually turned into a little tea house for my wife on her 50th birthday. That's easy to move. We'd pull that over. The shed here is on a slab. It could certainly be moved, but if it didn't have to be, I don't think aesthetically moving it from here to here is going to matter a whole lot to our neighbors, potential neighbors. So, we would prefer not to have to move it. It's a half a foot from the lot line, so I understand that. So, that's just information for how this would proceed. This is all new to me. I'm making it up as we go, but that's the backstory. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Sheriff, Mr. Bowander, before you go real quick, have you talked with any of your kind of immediate neighbors about this plan and gotten any feedback?
Yeah, I actually sent a letter out to all the contiguous neighbors, probably anyone, these neighbors, these, 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 and these. And I sent a letter to them preemptively. I said, you've seen yellow stakes in the yard and flags. If I were you, I'd wonder, what are the Bowanders doing? Are they moving or what? So, I told them exactly what I've told you and I said, you know, we hope we can stay and if we do sell the lot, and we're not even sure if we will, but first step is to find out if you can. So, if we do, we said, I can tell you, we'll be more earnest than anybody to find a builder that would build a house that we would feel good about. And, you know, I know there's no guarantees on that, but two years ago, when we first looked at this, a friend in our church said, well, I'll tell you the realtor or the builder you ought to talk to, he's the only one I talked to. And he came over and looked at it and he said, well, yeah, you could get a good piece of money for this and I can guarantee you, I'd build a house that would make the neighbors happy. So, that would be our plan. I think that, you know, it's clear for us, the benefit is ease of staying in our area. And, you know, I guess as an East Grand Rapids resident, it never hurts to have another tax-paying family in the community and there's no tear downs involved in this.
Any other questions for the applicant? No? Okay. When anybody else will open it up to public comment? Does anybody else have a comment on this lot split? No? Okay. And I will close public comment and bring it up here. May I please get a motion?
Motion to approve the lot split request at 1549 Lake Grove Avenue.
Can I get a second?
Support.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Does anybody have any, anything to say, any comments?
Yeah, I'll just briefly leave the discussion, I guess. First of all, I'll be supporting this for the reasons really laid out very well in Mr. Mizikar's memo and so I'm kind of adopting that essentially as my analysis here. I think this is an obvious place for another home. It lays out where the division results in a conforming lot that doesn't require any variances to be able to build on what that new parcel A would be and the square footage that is comparable to the neighborhood. I've not heard any objections or concerns from any of the neighbors. I think all of the review standards that are set forth in Mr. Mizikar's memo are met. I would add, just with regards to the comment, with regards to the shed, I am going to be supporting this and I guess a friendly amendment to my own motion, it'd be with the special conditions that were identified by Mr. Mizikar with regards to the accessory structures. I appreciate what your comments were with regards to that, Mr. Bowander, but it would be, it's a separate process. You would have to come back if you wanted to be able to keep it as is and request a variance and we would go through a whole separate process for that. We can't roll that into this. And so, for the purposes of the lot division, my motion is with the special conditions with regards to moving the structures that would otherwise be nonconforming in terms of their placement.
Do we need to get another second?
No, as long as she agrees that that was. Support. Yeah, I support that.
Okay. Okay. Does anybody else have any other comments? No?
Yeah, Commissioner Walters has covered it very well. I think this is an incredibly appropriate lot split in the neighborhood. I've walked by this property many times and I think that it's definitely wonderful to be able to add another home into the community, to get another family in our community. And when I think about the schools and everything and this is, you don't have to tear anything down, so it's really ideal, in my opinion. So, I would definitely support this.
Wonderful. Any other comments?
Yeah, for me, again, I think it's not every day that we get to have a lot split that could potentially add a full home into our community without any additional variances to that parcel A there. And as with Commissioner Hamrick, I think it's important that we are always keeping an eye on what's available for new families moving into our community, not just for the tax roll basis, but also for our schools because they do rely very heavily on our school, on our families.
And I agree. I think it's pretty cut and dry. I think the standards were met and Alec was very clear in pointing those out. And again, you know, possibly another family if you decide to sell. So, and thank you for coming to your first commission meeting as well. So, yeah, so I guess we can move this to a vote unless there's any other comments? No? Okay. So, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the final reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 79 C of Title VII of the City Code pertaining to recreational marijuana facilities and establishments. Introduction to the city attorney, John Huff.
Thank you. As you know, this is the third meeting where this matter has been discussed. It was discussed at a January work session as well as at the meeting on February 17th of this year. And the language of the ordinance that before you is identical to the language which is placed in the city right now. The reason that this is coming back before you is that that ordinance has a expiration date of June of this year and so we need to do something between now and June of this year about that expiration date. something between now and June of this year about that expiration date, I've had a number of conversations and/or questions with many of you about this ordinance, especially since the last meeting, I'm just going to highlight a couple of issues that I think will repeat questions for your sake and for the sake of the ordinance of the audience, I'm sorry, one of the questions that has been asked is, are there other uses, or can you give me examples of other uses that the city does not allow, either because of the nature of the use, or the size of the space that the city has to allow the use, and the answer to that question is yes, there are a number of uses that are not permitted in the city, primarily because of the size of the business district, or the impact on the business district, and among those would be fast food establishments, a bar, a gas station, and even though we have an adult entertainment ordinance, which we're required by law to have, there's no area in the city, because of a thousand-foot radius, that allows that to be located either. There were questions about what impact of any does the current ordinance or the proposed ordinance have on the state law that was passed in two thousand and eighteen, and the answer to that is, it really doesn't have any impact in the sense that everything that's being done is in accordance with that legislation, it does not infringe anybody's right to possess marijuana, to use marijuana, to grow marijuana in their own home, to purchase marijuana from a licensed facility, or to even have marijuana delivered to their home, the only thing that gets knocked out is having a facility in the city, and that's primarily knocked out by the radius from a school district, which is in the state act. I also had questions about buffer zones, and how did they come about, and can you tell me more about those, and so we looked into that, and interestingly enough, there are only two communities in Kent County that have opted in, that's the city of Grand Rapids and the city of Lowell, and in both cases, both of those communities added additional buffer zones to the thousand-foot radius that the state has for schools, and they did that in Grand Rapids to include things such as churches, daycare facilities, and public parks, and in Lowell, they just excluded the use from their main business district, their historic business district, and put it in their, I guess what you'd call their newer, their more industrial business district of the west on M twenty-one, and then they even created a setback from the central business district, in addition excluding the use in that district. There's been talk about the thousand-foot buffer, we believe that that buffer comes from the fact that both the state of Michigan and the federal government have a one-thousand-foot drug-free zone that exists and continues to exist, I'm not going to steal any of the mayor's thunder, she will have more information on this, and how in another state, the federal government has in fact gone after people located within a one-thousand-foot zone, it's violation of federal law, but to our knowledge, and we've looked, and our office has looked, and I know the mayor and many of you have looked, we're not aware of any community in the state of Michigan that has eliminated or reduced that thousand-foot buffer from schools. There have been questions about, well, does this contrary to the intent of the legislation that was adopted in two thousand and eighteen by public vote, and the answer to that question is no, it is not, in fact, there were five bullet points in that ballot proposal that were printed on the ballot itself, and one of those bullet points specifically was that the legislation would allow municipalities to ban or restrict marijuana businesses, so certainly someone who was voting on that was aware of that opportunity to restrict or ban local facilities, and the, the final issue which I guess I would address is a question of, many people have referred to this proposed ordinance that's in front of this, and it's, it's a permanent change, and I would say in government, there is no such thing as a permanent change, and, and this is no exception, any ordinance that you pass, with or without a sunset date, you have the right to modify, amend, or revoke at any time, and I know there's been some discussion about maybe wanting to extend this moratorium approach for some period of time to allow more things to develop, I don't think there's any problem with doing that, though I would encourage you to consider doing it by way of still passing this ordinance with the understanding, as I say, that you can change that at any time, I think if we look back to December of two thousand and eighteen, when we first adopted this ordinance, we all thought that a June two thousand and twenty date, which seemed like a long ways away, was going to give us a lot of time, and a lot was going to develop in that area, or in that timeframe, so we'd have answers to questions, in reality, of course, the state has been very slow, and other municipalities have been very slow in getting any licenses approved or issued, and we really have very little practical experience that has occurred in that eighteen-month period, so rather than trying to guess how much more time you need, I would encourage you to think about adopting the ordinance as written, realizing that whether you have more information in six months, or eighteen months, or three years, whenever you have it, and whenever you feel you want to act, you're not precluded from doing that. So, the other point I think I would make is, if, if there is a thought about that you do want to, you know, change horses at this point, and decide to opt in, you're, you're going to need some kind of extension to do that, because in reality, opting in would also involve the need to adopt a zoning ordinance in addition to a regulatory ordinance, that's going to take a significant amount of time, particularly in light of the fact that the planning commission is about to embark on another project next week, that is likely to take much of their time for several months, so, once again, I would suggest that adopting this ordinance at this time is the appropriate thing to do, and does not preclude you from opting in at any point in the future that you believe that you are ready to do so. Doug, I don't know if you have anything that you wanted to add to that?
I think you covered all the bases there, based off of our workshop that we had in January, recall, we just, we started out just asking the city commission and the public that attended, if there were any additional information or questions that anybody had with respect to the, the thousand-foot buffer that's in that MRTMA, which is the, the law, and based off of that exercise, as Attorney Huff noted, we used our GIS system and noted that every single parcel that is zone commercial C one or PUD, which are the only types of zoning, zones that we could actually have, recreational facilities with the thousand feet from Wealthy Elementary School, or the East Grand Rapids High School, were essentially knocked out, and this, this map right here shows an exercise we did with the thousand feet highlighted there in red, so you'd be looking at any of the parcels that you see there in the light green, or not light green, I'm sorry, the dark green, or the reddish pink, or the white, and that's from, measured from property line to property line, so it knocks out anything really within the district, then we, because we are, we are aware that, that you could look at reducing that thousand-foot buffer, certainly, and when you do that, that at a five-hundred-foot, what that does is it eliminates any of that activity occurring actually on, on Wealthy Street itself, you'd kind of be looking at parcels, the parcel up there by Lakeside, which is currently undeveloped, green space, and also basically the Roses Restaurant right there on Lakeside, on Reed's Lake, so, you, they're really, it really would, the five-hundred feet itself, by reducing that in half, just on our mere size, which is our biggest challenge, is that you're already going to knock out everything, and Gaslight Village as well, so, so when we're doing these exercises, it's, you know, part of it is what the, the state regulation is, but also in terms of what we are and how we're developed, and Gaslight Village is essentially three blocks, this is not a community that has large industrial space area, or large commercial areas, we also have our schools, in this case centrally located in our downtown, which is not necessarily the case in some of the other, many of the other communities that you've seen, and certainly in some of the small rural communities, over years, their, their schools have actually left their downtowns and moved out to more rural areas for redevelopment, so, there's just some, there's also just some uniqueness to, to East Grand Rapids and Gaslight Village that we just wanted to bring to your attention, and based off of that, we moved forward without, without any additional questions at that time, we moved forward with the first reading of the ordinance that's currently on the, on the books, with, with respect to just, just removing the, the sunset date provision, and subsequently, from that first reading to today, there's obviously been some interest, some level of interest in the community, and we've, between staff and Attorney Huff, we've tried to provide any additional information or answers we could, and we'll hear from residents and you all this evening.
Mr. Huff, I don't know, I know we just, I just put this before you tonight about the US attorney going after some Colorado dispensaries, do you feel comfortable speaking to that, and really possible implications?
Yes, I, I know Doug and I were looking at both the federal and the state drug-free zone legislation earlier today, and I think the first thing that struck me while I looked at the federal legislation was, I was kind of surprised that that hadn't happened, apparently, in fact, it has happened in Colorado, because it is clear that the, the location of a dispensary within that zone would violate the federal law, and apparently, for whatever reason, and you had some statistics there that might be reasons, the US attorney out there has decided to go after several of those dispensaries, probably on that basis.
Okay, thank you, and what would be the implication, do you think, Eric, can you guess, that the dispensary would have a certain amount of time to move, or would there be a fine, or did there's no way to?
My guess is they would, they would probably require them to move, because I think the whole idea is that you're not allowing other uses that relate to this within that, that facility, you really can't make an exception for the dispensary.
So in theory, no matter what, if we were to, if people had an appetite to reduce the buffer zone down to five hundred feet, we could be opening ourselves up to that?
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't necessarily directly affect us, but it certainly could affect the, the shop owner.
The shop, right, okay, thank you, any other questions?
Ms. Traf, can you, can you speak to the, just to clarify on the map here with regards to legal requirements, you know, when you draw even the thousand-foot buffer, the red on the outside, of course, you'll see that there's a portion of the PUD that falls outside of that, I, I, what I understand from our prior discussions is that it's our legal opinion that if, if the, if the line touches some portion of the lot or parcel, then you couldn't have an establishment within that hole, anywhere within that lot or PUD, is that right?
That's correct, because in the instance that you're referring to, for instance, where it says Shopping Center Road up there, in the white, that's all in common ownership, with the parcels that are in the white to the, the south, so if that parcel were owned by somebody else, or a, a portion of that parcel outside the red were owned by somebody else, it could be developed, but at this point, it's part of the same PUD under a common ownership, the same is true even with the, the blue radius, because the, the two parcels that are illustrated there, one is the Shopping Center parcel, which is all in a common ownership, and the other one, once again, is the Jade Peak PUD.
Mr. Huff, you, you discussed that communities have the ability to reduce the thousand-foot radius, do communities also have the ability to define their, define which parcels are excluded differently, for instance, say that if, if, say there's a PUD there that divides that up into a number of different commercial establishments, each with a separate entrance, that commercial establishments, establishments outside of whatever radius we pick would then be permitted?
I mean, I, if I understand your question, you're saying, would it be possible to potentially designate the scope of the radius in a different manner, I think the answer to that question is it would be possible to do that, you know, we checked into that when this first came up, to see what other people were doing, and universally, it had been that everybody was saying, you look at the parcel and the ownership of the parcel, so, that's what we did that, but to answer your question specifically, I don't think that would necessarily be prohibited in any manner.
Okay, and I, I guess it's probably a, a similar answer, but I'm also wondering if there's the ability to designate this as far as, measure the distances along public right of ways, rather than as the crow flies?
With regard to this approach, or that, with regard to the radius from schools, everybody has been using the crow fly approach, the city of Grand Rapids did use the school approach, or not the school, the, the road approach with regard to the residential district measurement that they're utilizing, and I believe perhaps the church measurement, so it, it seems like theoretically that would be out there, but so far, nobody else has adopted it on, on the school radius, nor does the Federal Drug Free Zone Act that uses the crow free approach, which may be why the other people have been using that as well.
Okay, thanks. I might just add that the, the measurement is from the actual parcel boundaries, what we're talking about is the crow flies, so to speak, so if you look at the parcel boundary for Wealthy Elementary School, which, I don't know if I have my-
No.
No, that's, that's okay, so if you look at, yeah, it's being circled right there, so the Wealthy Elementary parcel boundary there, that's why the, the shapes of, of the, of the buffer as you go out, they look a little, a little strange, because you're, you're mirroring what those are to the adjacent parcels, so, then you look at the high school, and it's the same thing, that's why it has kind of that, that double bulb-out approach, so to speak, and also with respect to the, the common ownership piece too, the other common aspect here too, is that if the, if the, the measurement is to the partial, that parcel that may be eligible, but, and not to the structure itself, if that makes sense. I'm sorry, could you repeat that last part? So, so it's the, the measurement to the actual parcel, that, that's the, that's the, the common approach that we've seen, in fact, in review of a few of the ordinances I looked at, Muskegon Heights even today, and so the measurement is, is from parcel boundary line to parcel boundary line, so- Okay. It's not that, I think what Attorney Huff was also saying too, is that, yeah, somebody could try to split off a portion to be outside of that, it's a possibility, potentially, but as it sits today, and with the common ownership, that's not likely.
Any other questions for me?
Mr. Huff, you mentioned that, you mentioned that if, if there was interest in revisiting it later, your recommendation might be to pass the ordinance as it was today, and then to still revisit it, aside from a sunset, is there any other way that there is an automatic revisiting, or would it be contingent upon somebody instigating that from either the city staff or city commission, if we didn't include that sunset?
Yeah, I mean, it, it would be dependent on someone here doing it, now, I suppose there are other ways to do that as well, I mean, you could direct the city manager to, you know, dock it a year out, and you'll look at it then, and it doesn't necessarily have to be in the thing, but to answer your specific question, that would be the only automatic way to have that review.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a question about if we were to opt in at some point down the road, how long does it take to actually opt in, what is that process, maybe you could speak to that?
You know, if everything was lined up perfectly, I would say it would probably take a minimum of five months, in reality, it might take a little longer than that, because of the, the fact that the planning commission has to be involved, and they have to have a public hearing, and you have to be involved, and you have to have a public hearing, and of course, the planning commission only meets once a month, so for instance, even if you were to decide tonight, yeah, we want to opt in, we want to get this started, the soonest you could get on their agenda would be in April, because their May meeting is next week, and there's no time to, to get any of that noticed.
So once that process would begin, and you have, say, five months passing, at that point, once it's approved by the city commission, what would need to happen after that?
Well, it, it depends a little bit, you know, we haven't done any of this, so we don't know exactly what you're going to adopt, but you can adopt local licensing regulations, you're not required to, so you're, that's one of the kind of decisions you'd have to make, that would make a difference on whether you have those licenses, and the application for a license, and all those sort of things, those peripheral things ready, or you might just decide to adopt an ordinance which, which says what you can do, one thing you should realize is, if you're going to adopt an ordinance like that, you probably are going to want to make a decision, a critical decision, the way the state law is set up, you actually authorize the number of establishments that you're willing to permit, and you need to decide that, it's generally a recommended process that if you're going to do that, you do more than one, the thought being that one creates all sorts of issues about, you know, is this a monopoly, a favoritism type thing of that sort, doesn't mean that you'll end up with more than one, but that if you were going to authorize it, at least it would not be you who was limiting it to that number, it would be because a person couldn't get the property, or couldn't get a facility in which to locate, which is not your issue.
If you, if you were not doing it locally with the local licensing that you were just speaking to, then what would be, what's the next option for that?
Generally, you would just put whatever restrictions you wanted to in your zoning ordinance and, and deal with it that way, I, I think, it's, it's, once again, it's early on, so we're not seeing yet how many people are using the license or not, but it's clearly optional, it is not required. Because all these people you're talking about would be licensed by the state, no matter what.
So, and my next question is, with respect to the buffer zones, if, depending if you were to, if we were to change the buffer zone from the, the default thousand-feet buffer, and that would only, it looks like, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks like it only would include the Jade Pig property, and is it also the, the DNW property that would fall within that sphere?
If you're talking about touching that parcel, the DNW Shopping Center would not be included in that. It would be the northern parcel, as Attorney Huff noted earlier, though, where it says Shopping Center Road there. It would be that PUD parcel, as well as the two PUD parcels noted where Roses exists on the exit.
So would the PUD parcels need to have separate approval for?
That would be part, that would be part of that process, because a PUD is different than...
Yeah, you have to amend the PUD, which might make the process even longer than just adopting a zoning ordinance.
I see, okay.
I think there's, there's also one minor error in this map, which is that the Heirloom House Antique Shop, I believe, is now zoned commercial, and that looks like it's outside both the thousand-foot and 500-foot radius.
It's actually not zoned commercial. It's residential with a use variance.
Okay, I, so I, I was looking at the master plan, and in the master plan, then it is mislabeled as casual.
That could be, yeah.
They probably showed what the existing, and some of those maps, it shows what the existing use is, but not what the zoned use is.
It actually had a sentence saying, it used to be a use variance, and then it was rezoned at commercial at some point.
Never happened.
More detail than that, so I wasn't sure.
Yep.
Okay.
So I have another question, then. If you were, if the city were to opt-in and change the buffer, would, would there, someone mentioned something about spot zoning. So in a sense, because we're so very small, and you have a limited parcels that fall within this range, within that zone, is that, is that considered spot zoning? And is that, are you discriminating against other properties because they are not eligible, because they're inside the buffer?
It's a concern how you do it. I mean, I think, let me answer your question in a different way than you asked it. I know at different times, we've talked about the possibility of maybe different zoning designations on either a portion of Greenwood or a portion of Lovett. So if you look at your blue map there, and let's say that you took, and I'm just picking this out of the air, a portion of Lovett to the north there, and said, well, we're going to make, we're going to add that to the commercial district. It backs up against the Jade Pig development, it backs up against Shopping Center Drive, all those things. You obviously, there, I don't think would be accused of spot zoning per se, because you have multiple parcels along that. Now, you don't have lots of them, you might have 10, but you've got multiple parcels. Spot zoning is normally where there's something that's kind of sticking out, and it's relatively small in size, and it, it's surrounded on multiple sides by, you know, non, non-zoned uses like that. So I'll go back to Commissioner Horst's question. If you just took the, the parcel the Antique House is on and tried to do that, I think that would be a classic spot zoning example.
Okay.
Because it'd really be surrounded on all sides, except for one, by residential uses, and it would just be a single parcel that you carved out.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Huff?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I will now open this up to public comment, and I do, don't have too many people here, but if we can keep it maybe comments to three minutes, that would be nice. And come on up, whoever would like to speak.
Thank you. My name is Karen Makerlady Waldron. My family, my immediate family has lived in East Grand Rapids for 46 years. I'm a 1987 graduate of East Grand Rapids. My daughter is a 2014 graduate of East Grand Rapids, and I have a freshman at the high school right now. The reason I'm here today is I want you to continue to keep the 1,000-foot buffer zone, and that's to protect our children. As I keep hearing right now, we do have one small area that is our commercial area. We are a family community. That is what we are known for. Within a very small area too, you can go to East Town, you can go purchase marijuana. There is going to be one opening up on the Belt Line that has already been okayed and purchased. We also need to think about, this is going to increase the police load if we open recreational marijuana. I did not vote for recreational marijuana. It is a drug. It is an addictive drug. We also have a problem at our high school with drugs. Now, nobody wants to talk about it. We have a great school system, not knocking the school system. The reason I told you that I'm a graduate here, my daughter's a graduate here, and my son is here, is because I've lived it, my child has lived it, and I've got another one coming up in it. And why would we open, open a drug shop, and it is a drug, right in the midst of our community? That is a question I want you to really sit with, because if you had a family member that's been impacted by now legal drugs, you would understand why this is a problem. And you need to start thinking about that, because this is going to impact the community. Right now, we don't know how big of an impact it's going to be, because a lot of communities are, are wiggling around. They're saying, what, what is this going to look like? But you know what? It's always going to show up in a drug, in a drug thing, sorry. It's going to show up in a drug test, and you're, it's going to impact you. The other thing I wanted to tell you too, is the THC levels today are not the THC levels of Woodstock. The THC levels back then were 3% to 6%. Now they're 25%. And addictive specialists are calling that Frankenpot. That's the truth. That, you look it up, it's not something that I made up. That's a fact. And then I also want to tell you that I, I'm a poll challenger, a poll challenger and watcher, and I saw a lot of college kids, age kids coming in, and you can vote, single votes, and they were coming in for one reason, or two reasons. And you know what? This, this is a big deal. So people, when they say 60% of the people voted for it, who voted for it? Because I know it was a lot of college kids voted for it, because you know what? It's fun, great. I mean, it's not fun for me, but I mean, it's, you know, this is fun. This is something they want to do. And they still can't do it. But I ask you to think of our children. That's what I'm concerned about. Think of our kids. This is a, this has been a problem in our community. Think about that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Anybody else?
Of course, yes. Please state your name.
I am glad to see some level-headed person here tonight, because I'm Carla Anderson. I'm a former business owner here in East Grand Rapids, and the community board came across with...
Oh, can you please state your address too, please? I'm sorry for the record.
2006 Welty.
Thank you.
And, that was my thought. So the community board came across, I'm a little behind on this. I did see that I think you might have had a vote to not, you know, change this ordinance, but I'm here to request that you do not change it, for the exact reasons that this woman is talking about. When I owned a business here, I was privy to a lot of information from parents saying, there's a drug problem. We, my children attended Marywood, and two children, parents decided there was such a drug problem, if they could just get the kids through seventh and eighth grade, so they sent them to Marywood, that they would survive the high school. You did have a problem. And you have a dispensary in East Grand, um, East Town, which we affectionately called the DMZ. So I've known so many people that have dealt with this. You aren't thinking of the secondary or the tertiary problems that this will cause. Now, if this is, because you're saying, oh, it's going to bring in money. That's ridiculous, because the children of this town, one of the last bastions where a child can come down and ride his bike without a parent in tow, is what we need. We've lost practically all of them. Since I've grown up, you can't go anywhere as a child anymore. This town is beautiful. These people are beautiful. When children, guys come from Calvin College and students, and you ask them why they came back, because they said they wanted to raise their children here. Why would you screw up one of the best things that we have? Mrs. Van Aalsberg would be turning over in her grave, to even think you'd consider it. And lastly, for the attorney, the last time I knew, this was a felony. I don't care what Michigan law you're quoting, and what they've passed. Is that not right?
I don't think, there, certain possession offenses are felonies under federal law, but some are still misdemeanor.
Selling marijuana?
It depends on the quantity.
Okay. But I urge you to have some moral compass in this situation. And there's, right across the road, they can get it, we don't need it. Protect the children of this community.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Somebody else like to speak to this?
Hi, my name is Jack Lehman. I've lived here since I was two.
Can you name your address too? State your address.
1121 Canterbury Way.
Thank you.
I just have my scout uniform on, because I have to go to a scout meeting after this. I go to scouts with Sam Rick's son. I guess just kind of, I can't speak for every kid who goes to the high school, but I know that I can speak from what I've seen. And I've seen people who like, go to Gaslight Village after school, and they go to Rite Aid or DNW, and they have someone who is over the age of 21 go and buy things like alcohol, or cigarettes, or vapes for them. And I've, you know, told people at the high school about it, and I mean, I'm sure they know what's going on. I'm sure Officer Wallace knows what's going on, right? And it's been going on since, stuff like that's been in stores like that, since the beginning of time, since probably your age is two. But I think that if we have one, you know, right in our backyard, it's just a lot more accessible. And, yeah, I guess that's just all I have to say. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming forward. Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak to this, this evening?
Hi, my name is Chris Knapp, 2530 Maplewood. I have a feeling some people are here because of a post I made on Facebook. So I'm just here to kind of represent kind of where I was coming from with it. I have three children, one of whom has graduated from high school, one of whom is a senior this year, and one of whom is in eighth grade. I have lived here for 17 years. And I'm here because I think we have an opportunity to be a model community for de-stigmatizing cannabis. We are not, Gaslight Village is not currently a drug-free zone. We, as a community, have elected to allow a restaurant and bar to set up literally outside the door to our high school, where adults can enjoy a margarita, or a shot of tequila, or a beer, within easy eyeshot of, of children walking by at any hour of the day. We have Rite Aid and DNW pharmacies, which sell legally addictive drugs like opioids. We have DNW and Rite Aid that have candy bars within a short walk from the beer and wine aisle. So to say that we have a drug-free zone already within Gaslight Village is really not, is not a true statement. We have an opportunity to educate our community, including young people, about responsible adult use and sale of cannabis. We also have an opportunity to create an ordinance that would allow a business that exceeds community standards, while also contributing potentially meaningful revenue to the city. I encourage those of you who haven't done so to explore what a modern cannabis retailer looks like in the states where they are regulated. You'll find places not far in appearance from a high-end cosmetic shop, a salon, or even an Apple store. And that's thanks in part to well-crafted local ordinances. You'll find proprietors and employees who care deeply about educating their customers, keeping their product out of the hands of minors, and sourcing from responsible licensed suppliers. One of the issues that was brought up about dosing is actually because of the black market in cannabis, the levels of THC, nobody has any idea what level they're getting. At a licensed retailer, you can actually educate yourself and get, and have a better understanding of what you're purchasing versus what you would get from a black-market retailer. We have an opportunity to say to our, our kids that cannabis comes from, cannabis comes with some of the same responsibilities as alcohol. It's not for everyone. But it's also not something to fear. It's not something to buy from a stranger in a dark alley, or simply to say, not in my backyard too. Legalization of cannabis is here. The message we send to our kids about how we as adults will handle it, is one that they will take into an adulthood. Is East Grand Rapids the kind of community that says, oh, it's okay to have a dispensary in Grand Rapids? It's okay to have one in Lowell, but not in my backyard? I don't think that we're that kind of community. If so, we need to ask ourselves why, and what we're really trying to protect here. I ask you to temporarily extend the moratorium on cannabis-related businesses to give the city, staff, and commission an opportunity to set aside biases and misinformation, and to study what a community-supported opt-in ordinance could look like in East Grand Rapids. I also encourage each of you to take the time to better understand the facts about the economic and community benefits access to legalized cannabis can provide. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak to this tonight?
You may take two turns if you'd like. Well, I'd just like to say that you might just as well, you know, pimp out some prostitutes.
Okay, you need to come, you need to come forward, please, and not address anybody directly in the audience. If you have another comment, you may say it.
Because this is serious. And you cannot say, well, it's here, so you might just as well accept it, you know. I'm very sorry about that, because this upsets me to no end, to see this community say that doping at that level is fine. Yes, we have prescription drugs. Yes, we have alcohol. But I came here from a town that was very small and had a tavern, and drinking was a recreation. And every night, somebody ended up in an accident. Why did I move here? Because I thought people had some common sense, and they had a moral compass, and they lived in a different world than I lived in. I came here for that reason. And now, you want to change it? It'll be the same place, just with more money. Please do not accept this.
Okay, thank you so much.
I just wanted, just, can you please make it just briefly?
Don't address anybody in the audience.
No, I am not going to.
Okay, restate your name and your address.
Karen, Karen Makerlady Waldron, 356 Gladstone Southeast. I live at apartment number two. We own a house on Brighton Drive, too. The THC levels that I quoted were not back alley. Those were, those were from shops. And explaining the differences of what we have now, and also from an addiction specialist. So, and it is called Frankenpot, because they are mixing and matching to get the best high. And the other thing I wanted to talk about, when he talks about not in our backyard, when you hear not in our backyard, we're a landlocked city. We've always been a landlocked city. We've always only had Gaslight Village and this area for the library. We've always had that same thing. We don't have any other places. That's why when they say not in our backyard, well, yeah, we don't have any other word to go. No one's going to knock down their $750,000 house to make a little, you know, a shopping center. So I just wanted to state that. And it wasn't back, it wasn't back alley.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody else here to speak to this issue? Nope? Okay, I'm going to close public comment and bring it up here.
Do you want to take a motion, or do you want to take discussion?
Let's take a discussion, and just kind of get a pulse, see where people are. Did you want to start, or, John, do you want to, let's just start at this end?
Sure, I can start. I think, you know, we, we've been discussing this for a while, and despite that, there are still some unanswered questions. I think one of the chief ones is that we don't know what Gaslight Village development will look like. As Attorney Huff hinted, we may get a better idea for that in, in short order. I'm hopefully, I'm hopeful we'll gain some understanding in the next few months. And, you know, that, that could ultimately determine whether there will be any commercial properties in, in this area that could even potentially be in the discussion. So for that reason, I'm inclined to support an extension of the moratorium. I think what Attorney Huff proposed in... I think what Attorney Huff proposed in adopting this model ordinance and then setting a target date to reopen it is one way of doing that. Another way is just to extend the sunset of what we're currently doing. Obviously, one way would make it more incumbent on the city commission to reopen this, whereas the other, the other way would sort of force us to reopen it because if we didn't, there would be something that we didn't intend to adopt. Based on the commissions, based on the comments we received, we've heard public opinion strongly on either side of this. We've noted, we've heard that some people think a high-end dispensary with controlled signage could be a big draw to Gaslight Village. There could be some positive effects. We've also heard some, some serious concerns about our community being family-friendly and focused around the schools. Believe it or not, I don't necessarily see an inherent conflict between those two points. I think we have more exploring to do for sure, but I, you know, I think this is something that is worth discussing. I wasn't here on February 17th, so I apologize if I missed that discussion. But the one thing I didn't see an extensive record of in the minutes from that meeting was the nuances of this 1,000-foot barrier. And I asked some questions earlier to try to flesh that out, both what it means now and how we could interpret it, and ultimately what, what that might mean with the future development of Gaslight Village. The backside of where Shopping Center Road hits Lakeside and Greenwood, that's a little over 1,000 feet as the crow flies from our schools, but right now, more than 2,000 feet on public rights away. So I think that's something that might be worth discussing. So with all that said, my, my thought right now is that I would propose extending this moratorium either by adopting this residence or by pushing up the sunset date.
Okay, thanks.
Sure, sure. First of all, I want to say thanks to everybody who not only came out tonight, but shared their opinion by email, or received a number of email comments from residents. I also want to thank Mr. Nape for starting a Facebook discussion that at least some of us had a chance to kind of get an additional feel for what some community members were thinking about this. And that's good because this is our third time as a commission with this on our agenda here over the last couple of months. In our first couple of meetings, we didn't have anybody come. And so I'm glad that we're, we're getting some, some community feedback there. I think that helps us in our deliberation and decision-making. I'm ready to vote tonight. I'm not, I'm not personally in a space where I think we need to buy more time or wait a year, what have you. I think I have enough information to, to make my mind up tonight. I do want to kind of reflect, I think largely on some of the points that Mr. Huff made and just really kind of echo in terms of what I'm thinking. I think one thing that's really important, and we've talked about here in terms of whether we, you know, extend the moratorium or do something like that with the ordinances, is that anything we do tonight is not a permanent decision. I mean, it's a decision today. I mean, we, as a commission, regularly vote to modify or amend or repeal ordinances that have been on the books for years. We could decide at our very next meeting to restart the process again if something new happened where we were ready to do that. I think it was appropriate for us to put a sun, a kind of a 18-month moratorium in when we first did this because we were really saying, "We don't know anything yet. This is so new." The way that the proposal came up required us to act very quickly because I think it was like a 30-day period or so until it became effective if we didn't do anything. And so we had to, you know, we just didn't have any, hardly any information at that time. I feel like, for me at least, I have enough information to be able to vote tonight without feeling that I'm going to learn a lot more in six months, or a year, or 18 months. And I personally don't think that what happens with the Jade Pig development, for example, really impacts this. We're, I think it's more of a, an overall decision about how we feel, in particular about this 1,000-foot buffer zone around schools. And that doesn't change depending on what happens with the Jade Pig development. I do think that a couple of other things that were really important to me in looking at this is, is, I've, I've heard over and over again from, from some, some people who are kind of more advocating for retail marijuana that we, you know, that it had majority support in East Grand Rapids when it came to the proposal. I think, I think there's a, there's a clear distinction there with regards to whether or not private use in your own home or private grow in your own home had majority support versus retail sales of recreational marijuana. I've talked to a lot of people who voted, say they voted for the proposal, but they didn't for a second understand or think that that meant that they were voting for retail shops in Gaslight. So I do think there's a real distinction there. I don't feel like we have a real strong public voice on that, that's really calling for that. I think we're really dealing with a very specific issue, which is whether or not we want to be the first community in Michigan to go closer than 1,000 feet from our schools. And I just don't think we should be the first community to do that. I have legal concerns with regards to what we've just discussed in terms of federal law, with regards to drug-free school zones, and whether or not even if we did that, you end up with federal enforcement problems. I'm just not hearing a lot of appetite for, from the community for saying we should shrink the 1,000-foot buffer zone. Other communities have added buffer zones. I'm not saying that we need to necessarily do that, but we're talking about going the opposite direction of saying not only are we not going to add buffer zones, but we're going to shrink the statutory buffer zones around schools. And, and so I, I just don't see a lot of community appetite for that. I know that there are a couple of people who have advocated for that. But I think part of the reason why we don't see a whole lot of people in the audience is because the proposed ordinance that is on the agenda would be to not allow retail sales in East Grand Rapids. I think if we had a proposed ordinance that said we want, we are going forward with retail sales in East Grand Rapids, I think this would be standing room open in the room. So I think that that's frankly kind of telling as to where I think the community is on this. I'm not anti-marijuana in terms of the fact that I'm voting for this. I, I'm, and I'll even personally share, I think I have shared before, I actually voted for the proposal. I voted for the proposal to legalize or decriminalize at a state standard. But I think that's something to me that's very different from what we're talking about here, which is kind of being the, the first community to say, "We're going to encroach on the buffer zone and that otherwise is set forth under state and federal law." I'm just not hearing that. I, you can debate whether buffer zones are appropriate, whether it's the same or different than alcohol. I don't know that that's, I think there's arguments to be made on both sides of that. I think we're definitely in a situation here where there's no question alcohol is still much more socially acceptable than marijuana. And I think, I think, I'm not sure that I want to be the, I want this community to be the culture war leader on that point, in terms of kind of leading the charge on that. I don't know that that's where we are as a community. I think it might progress fairly quickly. There might be, it might not take more than a year or two of experience in other communities for us to look at and say, "Oh, it's going okay in the city of Grand Rapids. It's going okay in Lowell. They're not having major problems and they're, they're driving some revenue, so maybe we should look at that." But I'm not sure that I see the benefit of us being the leader in that. Why go first there, given our kind of unique situation with our downtown area? You know, I, I do think that, that the commission should continue to look at it, should continue to be open-minded to it as circumstances change and as we get more information. But I think, I think explicitly kicking it down the road by, by kind of extending a moratorium sends the wrong, wrong message in terms of kind of where we're at right now. And I, I think we're at the point right now where I at least don't have an appetite to change the buffer zone. But if something changed where we then had commercial districts outside of 1,000 feet, or if the PUD got split or something like that, then we can talk about it. From my standpoint at least, I don't see a reason for us to go first. And so I've probably already said too much, but I'm going to be voting in favor of the proposed ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
So I personally would rather not vote on something without having all my Ts crossed and all my Is dotted. And I still feel like there are so many questions that I have. And, you know, a big one for me has to do with the fact that our business district isn't even totally built out yet. And I know that, you know, that it's hard for me to imagine, you know, what that even looks like right now, I mean, because it's such a big question mark. And I think that another very important piece, and we didn't really address it very much tonight, was the, the revenue piece. And we had spoken with our finance director about this to try to get some ballpark numbers about what does that even mean? Because we've, we've heard from a lot of residents about how we would stand to gain a lot of money by having a, an operation like this in our, in our community, which, you know, on the surface is rather enticing, but there are so many layers to it with excise tax and, and having, everything kind of trickles up to the, at the state level and then it trickles back down. And depending on the number of establishments that you would have, it may not really, really be worthwhile. But we don't know that right now because this law has not even had a chance to really settle in at the state. And people are just now getting, in different communities across the state, they're just now getting their applications filled out and going through the process. So who knows how many establishments are going to ultimately be up and running and online? And to even think about answering that question without having, you know, at least a year, maybe two years or more of time go by where you can see how it all sort of shakes out is just, it's a huge mystery right now. So that's something we don't know. We do have good indication that our Jade Pig property, people might be bringing a site plan soon, so maybe then we'd have a better idea of how that's going to pan out. But right now, we don't know. That's an unknown. And it just feels like there's so many unknowns that it kind of bothers me. But at, at the same time, I think it would be worthwhile to extend the moratorium. I don't, I have, I've had a lot of trouble figuring out for myself what would be an appropriate moratorium. I know that if we said we were going to stay opted out and lose the sunset, I know that it would be incumbent upon us to bring that to the attention of the mayor and the staff and say, "You know what? We definitely want to revisit this now that X amount of time has passed and we feel like we have some good information to make good decisions and we know more." So I think on one hand, I'm, I'm just, I'm struggling a little bit. I don't know if it makes sense to just have a moratorium and extend the deadline. And what would that deadline look like? Would it be a year from the sunset that we already implemented? Or would it be just opting out for now and then once we get enough information, we can opt back in, or revisit the conversation rather, and then potentially opt in if it was appropriate? So I'm just struggling with that a little bit. I'd like to hear what some of the other commissioners have to say about that.
Okay, we'll go down to Mr. Pakla.
I think there have been a lot of good points shared by my fellow commissioners up here. Definitely heard what the public has had to say. Received, by my count, seven emails on the record. The feedback that I've heard from residents both tonight, the emails and in casual conversations has been pretty divided. So I, I definitely agree with what Commissioner Aaronhor said, agree with Commissioner Hammack, particularly with regard to the changes that are going on in the village. I am hesitant to support any measure that would just put this into ordinance right away. I see no reason why we couldn't look at potentially even a 24-month sunset because we don't know how the communities that have opted in, how it's going to impact those. And I, and they're still kind of trailing in, so to speak. Grand Rapids is having problems getting things off the ground. And I think if we looked at a 24-month sunset, that would give us potentially an entire year's worth of kind of momentum that the state would have. And it would also give, myself being recently appointed, I wasn't part of the work session where we discussed this issue. This would definitely be something, as I'm door knocking, getting to know my constituents, I would want to get a feel for, for how they felt about this issue. So I would not be in support of the ordinance as written, and I would be in favor of extending the moratorium.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pakla?
This is something that I've been thinking about a lot because when we read the initial ordinance two weeks ago, I believe Commissioner Walters, you, you moved the, to introduce the ordinance and I seconded it. And so initially, when I thought about this, I thought it was a pretty cut and dry statement to say, "If we abide by the state of Michigan's guidelines," which are not just the state of Michigan's guidelines, but we have, you know, further reason to believe it's also related to federal drug-free zones, that it, it is just a lot of extra work for our community to be doing to put in place the stated guideline of 1,000 foot if there's no possible location for it to be. I still feel that way, that I think that with 1,000-foot buffer, it is an academic exercise, was I believe the term that was used previously, for us to go through the motion of trying to figure out what are the different pieces that we would need to put into place to make this happen in our community. I got further clarification from Attorney Huff earlier today, and we got that today as well in the commission meeting, that not only would we have to then place it on the books in the ordinance that we have currently banning establishments, but we'd also have to go through some zoning ordinances to make that happen. And it would be a significant, at least time commitment and also staff commitment to make that happen. Gave me better understanding about kind of what the scope is of that academic exercise. I also think that one of the things that we are missing from this conversation is our schools coming to us as a school district and talking to us about how they feel. So that's on the flip side of this conversation. And my own personal beliefs about the use of recreational marijuana, I too voted for the proposal when it came through because I think that, that it was not voting individually for establishments within the city, but voting to, as a state of Michigan, de-stigmatize the use of recreational marijuana, which has lots of research associated with the kind of general outcomes as a, as a society. I want to stipulate again that what we're voting on tonight is not anything that has to do with a resident's ability to use marijuana in the privacy of their own home or their right to grow marijuana within their home. That is by state statute, something that we cannot touch. The only thing that we as a community can touch is whether or not we allow establishments inside of our community. Commissioner Hammer brought up the funding structure, did some digging into that. And for anybody that's interested, it's actually quite a lot to go through, but I'm going to state some of it. So the funding structure is that any dollars covered by the 10% excise tax actually go first to cover state costs for running marijuana licensing and everything else related to that, then go back to pay $10 million that were loaned from the general fund, then cover $20 million of research for each of the first two years that it exists. And then beyond that, 15% go-to municipalities, split up by the percentage of establishments that exist within the boundaries of the municipality. So two things that I noted there. One is that it's very complicated and unlikely to result in a lot of money for the city of East Grand Rapids, but also that we have absolutely no idea what that looks like. So I say all of those things really to say that I am in favor of two things. One, I'm in favor of currently not reducing the 1,000-foot buffer zone at all because I think it just leads to a lot of, a lot of varied issues that would place our community potentially in conflict between the city and the schools. It would potentially place the location of that establishment in violation of federal law. But I am really strongly an advocate for us to make sure that we are being open-minded about what the future holds with the development of not just Gaslight Village, but our city as a whole, right? Understanding that currently, Gaslight Village is our commercial district, and that's the only place where we could place an establishment. We can't even place it in a, in a special use location in a residential zone because that is banned by state statute. So where, where I find myself is in this interesting location where I'm in favor of a moratorium, but I'm not in favor of putting into an ordinance because I don't know what that would be. It would be a totally arbitrary number for us to pick what that is. And so I find myself advocating for, voting for the ordinance that we find in front of us, but finding some mechanism by which we continue to keep it on the tip of our tongue or on the top of our minds to be open-minded about how this could potentially fit into our master plan, our vision of the community in the future.
Okay, thank you. And I, I really like the point that you just made, Mr. Pakla. I too, so I- I, I too, so I, some of the communication I've heard from residents online through emails and in private conversations, some people had referred to that 1,000-foot buffer as just this arbitrary number. It was kind of meaningless. It was just arbitrarily dictated by the, by the state. And then when we did a little bit more digging on it, and that actually, and where thinking comes from, the Federal Drug-Free Schools Act. And I found some information today, and I need to do some more research, this is just first blush, but it sounds like some communities that have changed the ordinance or reduced buffer zones are now being challenged or had been challenged in the past by the federal government. So for that reason, I, I don't have any appetite currently to entertain reducing that 1,000-foot buffer until there's more research done and really figuring out what has happened nationally. And, but I do want to make it clear that it, it appears that 1,000-foot buffer zone is not just an arbitrary number. It was there for a reason and it has been adopted nationally by most communities. So yes, it appears that there needs to be, we need to come up with a lot more information. So on one hand, I think it's having the conversation down the road. I, I like that. I believe I'm ready to vote tonight, but I want to be very clear that that's not saying we're not going to continue the conversation. Right now with this 1,000-foot buffer, it just doesn't make sense. It isn't an academic exercise. There's, if we stick to the Federal Drug-Free Schools Act and that recommendation and the State of Michigan's recommendation, there's nothing. I mean, it's very clear on the map that there's really no area to develop that currently. We don't know what's going to happen in Gaslight and we're going to be finding out fairly soon. And there could be other things that are happening in our village too, that could change that and open up the conversation later. But this, the red zone right there is, is fairly clear that it just, you know, as Mr. Lefave said, our, our village is only so big. We have a very small footprint and our schools are right in that footprint. And do we really want to be, as Commissioner Walters pointed out, the first community to throw that buffer zone kind of to the wayside and experiment in our, in our village? And I don't believe that the appetite is, is strong enough to be, as Commissioner Walters said, a culture war leader in that front. Is this, you know, could we open up the conversation? Absolutely. And I'd probably look to you for recommendation on what you would think. We take the vote now? Is there a, a method to which we can assure that we open the conversation or?
You're looking in terms of a vote on the opt-out today. Certainly at any point in the future, we could, we could address conversations. I think I've heard from a number of, of the commissioners that there's some interest in seeing what happens with the redevelopment project for Gaslight Village that's coming up. I mean, certainly we can see what comes from that, and if there is something that looks like it's in play, we could start with another workshop session to have the conversation of what, what variables are in play and, and maybe they're not. In terms of, you know, setting something in stone, I think it just needs to be at the direction of the, of the city commission to yourselves, to staff, to simply revisit it. We've done that with something as simple as changing signage on the street where it's been approved and we've been directed to bring back, bring it back to you guys just as a discussion item in the future. So there's different ways you can handle it. Could be something as simple as that, if that's the purview of the vote this evening. It's really up to you, but it could be pretty informal.
Yeah. Can I add a thought to that? I mean, we have the benefit now of the change that you implemented, which is to have a check-in with all the commissioners with regards to agenda items, but improve the agendas at a time. And so I think in the past that there was at times some question with regards to the, the mayor's control of the agenda in terms of if the mayor didn't want something on the agenda, it became more difficult for other commissioners to raise the issue for discussion. We now have a mechanism in place that, that kind of opens that up. So I'm very confident that we don't need to formalize the how and when we check in with that. I think there's lots of means by which any one of us, if we felt like now's the time for a discussion, could bring that before the commission.
Yeah, I agree that we, that new agenda item is, I agree, that would be a good way to introduce it. So I, yeah, I mean, I really just feel like, one of the primary reasons people move to East Grand Rapids is for our schools, and I don't want to skew that relationship between the city and the schools at all. And that buffer zone was put in place for a reason, and we would literally be the only community in the state that is considering reducing that. And I don't think that there's an appetite for that currently, certainly not for me. So, but I know that here on the commission, there were three commissioners that wanted to entertain extending the moratorium. Does somebody want to make a motion to do so or go to the regular vote?
I would like to move to extend the moratorium. I like Mr. Haxel's thinking long-term on this because I don't know what additional information we'll have in six months, but I would propose extending the moratorium as it is right now for 12 additional months.
From the, the current sunset date?
From the current sunset date of June, is it June 6? Yeah, June 6, 2020.
Okay. Can I guess ask a procedural question before we, or maybe you should see if there's a second first, but I think there's a procedural question to ask.
Is there a second? I second that.
To extend the moratorium?
To extend the moratorium for one year.
And what's the precedent?
Yeah, I guess it's more of a legal question for Mr. Huff with regards to when we're enacting an ordinance that is kind of different than what's been noticed and presented for reading. I mean, do we have the ability tonight to, to do that? Do we have to essentially vote up or down the current ordinance and then we'd have to come back for another reading as opposed to a different type of ordinance? Can you provide some guidance on that?
I, I think you can do it tonight basically for two reasons. First of all, the ordinance provisions are already in place and, and we're not changing them by doing this. We're just extending the time that they remain in place. So yeah, I don't view this as a major change to the body of the ordinance. And since you've already previously approved the same language, I think it's, that's another reason that would bolster, you could change an expiration date if that's all you want to do at this point.
Thank you.
I think something else to point out that Commissioner Pakla pointed out that I forgot to mention that is so very important with respect to the schools is that this, from what I understand, the school district, or the, the school board rather, as a, as a body, is not able to come in and present their, an opinion, if you will, in a formal fashion because they had not taken or were unaware of what the introduction and the workshop and things like this in order for them to assemble, having a formal meeting as a, as a body and invite public input at the school district prior to our meeting tonight, prior to this vote. And I would definitely want to have that, those opinions, and I would want the school board members to come and present that to us and have that opportunity, which hasn't happened on this round, if you will. So if we have this extension and it gives them a chance to go through that process on their end and then come in and present that to us in a formal way, I, I welcome that. I welcome that, so.
Okay. So we had a, a motion and a second. So what we're voting on now, to be clear, is an extension. Is that correct?
Yep, yep. So can I, can we have a little, can we have more discussion with regards to the extension? I don't know, it's your motion. I don't want to talk over if you, if you have anything else to add about why, about that point.
I'd just like to add that when I, when I made the first commissioner comment as we were going around here, I said I would be in favor of either a moratorium or passing the ordinance with intent to revisit. The more, the more I think about it and the more I hear commissioners comment about it, I, I'm not sure that, that, I, I think the best way to go about this is to have a moratorium rather than a past ordinance that we have an intent to revisit but may or may not revisit in the future. I think if the moratorium period rolls around, it's 12 months from now, or if we decide an alternate time, that's, that's also fine with me, and nothing has changed, we can always just opt out. We can always just vote to adopt this ordinance. We're never going to lose the ability to do that. So I, I don't really see a downside to extending the moratorium versus, versus adopting the ordinance. And for that reason, I'm, I'm more strongly in favor of the moratorium rather than just adopting this ordinance with no sunset.
Anybody else?
Sure. I'm kind of on the opposite of that. I think, I think there is a benefit to deciding tonight because I think it removes some of the uncertainty that the community may have as to where our, kind of our general mindset is with regards to this. With regards to the 1,000-foot buffer, which is what I really think this is about, the 1,000-foot prohibition zone that you can't have a retail store within 1,000 feet, nothing that happens is going to change that unless it's a change of the zoning map to add commercial districts. Otherwise, the map doesn't change. The map doesn't change depending on what happens with Jade Pig. The map doesn't, it doesn't change. And I just, I just think that the type of change that would cause me to possibly revisit this is, it could happen, but I don't know that it happens even within 24 months. And so I think the much cleaner thing to do is, unless there's appetite for a majority of the commission to actually reduce from the 1,000 feet, if everyone here is saying, well, I wouldn't reduce from the 1,000 feet, but I just want to be open-minded, I think we should vote as is. But I mean, if a majority of the commission actually thinks that there's appetite to reduce from the 1,000 feet, well then I guess that's why you put a moratorium, because the schools aren't going to move, the map's not going to change. And so from my standpoint, I'm, I'm ready to vote now.
Well, I do have one question though, because if Jade Pig were to build out their property, and I just need a little bit of clarification where their parcel, where it is outside that buff, that 1,000-foot buffer zone, if that's built out, where, where would that, where, where does that land? Just help me understand that.
Are you asking for clarification from, from Doug or from?
Sure, from Doug, that would be fine. Yeah.
Or Mr. Huff?
That land goes all the way to the, to Lakeside Drive.
Right. So the, the point being is that unless you had a, a parcel split, the parcel there that, that's in question, that's kind of split in half there where the 1,000-foot buffer is, it begins there at the rear of the C1 Commercial, right where the, the tax for shopping center road begins there behind the, the DNW Shopping Center, and extends, as Attorney Huff noted, all the way to Lakeside Drive. So that is a common parcel, it is one parcel. The, the, the measurement is to the parcel boundary, so that, that's split in half now. If, if at the future somehow that, that smaller portion that's just outside of the red 1,000-foot buffer, whether that's this current development or 20 years from now or 10 years from now, who knows? If there is a, a different redevelopment that, that would come in for a lot split, then you would have something in play. But as is today, even with, even with the impending development coming forward here through, through planning ultimately to the city commission, that is not what, what's, what's, what's going to be discussed as a parcel split. It's going to be a development of that site in common ownership. So it's not on the table is what we're seeing.
Yeah. Because part of it falls within.
Correct.
Within the zone.
The entire thing does.
Correct.
Yep.
Well, I think I can say without laying the cat out of the bag that the current proposal that they're making has a single structure on that entire parcel.
Okay. So the chances of a parcel splitter are pretty unlikely.
Slim to none.
Mm-hmm. Did you have any other thoughts or?
No, not right now.
Okay. Does anybody else have any? So is the, is the appetite to, is that?
So for me, I think my appetite is, as Commissioner Walters suggested, not to reduce the 1,000-foot zone, right? So for me, the things that would potentially change my view on whether or not we should allow marijuana establishments in the city outside of that 1,000-foot zone would depend on only a change to the map, which we don't have any indication is going to happen. Any change to reduce that 1,000-foot zone would really come from two places for me. One would be probably a change in federal law to reduce that zone from the Federal Drug-Free Schools Act, which I don't anticipate coming anytime quickly. It could come, but it probably wouldn't come quickly. And second might be some additional community input and/or input from the schools that would show, I would say, a significant and robust appetite for a reduction of the 1,000-foot. I don't think either of those happen with the introduction of a sunset into the ordinance here. So I don't see the need for a sunset beyond just us either directing city staff to have it be a conversation that we have at some point in time, or us individually as commissioners paying attention to it, saying that we're going to be, you know, understanding that what we're not trying to do is simply ban marijuana establishments, but we are understanding that there are limitations to where they can go in the city which reduce our options. So I don't currently have an appetite for adding the moratorium language, the sunset language into the ordinance.
Okay. Do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I wouldn't say I'm in favor of reducing the buffer, but I'm not opposed to exploring options for that. You know, looking at can a parcel, if all of it isn't included within that 1,000-foot buffer, can we look at that as a possibility? My understanding of the Drug-Free School Zone Act, which was one of the first laws that went on the books for the War on Drugs mid, late 70s, was just to keep drug dealing from going on near school property. And it didn't necessarily ban marijuana establishments. I mean, granted, they're illegal at the federal level, but was that the penalties for being charged and convicted with a crime were significantly higher. We could see within the next two years, depending on what could happen, you know, in Washington where marijuana is removed from the Schedule I classification, and that could change things as well. So I, honestly, this is really a tough decision for me. I appreciate everything every commissioner has said here and where they're coming from.
Isn't that a tough decision for you because, regarding having a moratorium or?
Well, I would say, as far as the moratorium's concerned, this is something I would continue wanting to talk to citizens about, getting a feel for that, and I would hope that it was something we could all be proactive about revisiting.
Yeah. I, I just think it's a very unusual case for us to actually pass an ordinance with a time limit in it, and we did so for very special reasons when we did it a year and a half ago. And I don't think those reasons are still here today.
Right.
I think we had a, in a semi-emergency situation with a new law that just passed that nobody knew anything about, and so we said, let's put it off for a period of time to allow the regulations to come out. And as I mentioned before, at least alluded to, part of the reason was, is uncertainty without doing so, whether it would come up on the agenda again, because we had a different mayor in place and because we had a different process with regards to control of the agenda. And we now have a mayor in place that I think has expressed her willingness and interest to revisit the issue, and we now have a process in place that allows any commissioner to identify concerns with the agenda. So I just don't think we have the same types of circumstances in place that lead us to need to do something in our ordinance that creates a sunset that forces us to revisit again. I am extremely confident that we will revisit again if there is a change in circumstances with regards to a change in the federal law, or a change in the zoning map, or a change based on discussions of the schools that would really give us a basis for saying we now know something new that could move the needle in terms of how we address this.
Right. Any, any one of those changes could make it organically come back up on the agenda without having that sunset. I, I agree.
Now, I do have one, one more thing to add, which is that, you know, as part of this process of having the sunset and then introducing the change to the ordinance which removed the sunset, we did have a work session that allowed for some additional public comment to come in. As was noted previously in the meeting, we had very little public comment, had no public comment on this issue, I, that work session. We had no public comment on this issue at our last city commission meeting. I appreciate all of our citizens that came in tonight and that communicated with us, and I would love to find some way to continue to engage residents to get the pulse on the community as to how we're feeling about that. And I don't know if that's something that we can do without it being an ordinance that we're introducing. We can hold a work session to have a conversation, should something be on our radar? You know, I'm, I'm thinking if, if one of us is planning to introduce something onto the agenda because of one of those changes that we all have discussed here tonight, is, is having a work session ahead of time to capture additional public feedback or is communicating that out specifically to say, this is coming up, you know, this one very hot-button issue that we know has a lot of residents wanting to communicate with us? Is that something that we can focus in on, either a work session or specific communication out?
Absolutely. Yeah, we can ask, and Doug was the one that proposed the first work session and, and got it done. And if any of those changes were to occur, that would change the map or change the law. the law, the federal law, or, you know, something else occurs in our village, we could absolutely insist on having a work session, any one of those triggers, and engage the public.
Is it feasible to consider having a public work session between now and the current sunset date of June 6th? To get that pulse from the community who's missed out on the first work session, and maybe give the school district, or the school board, rather, an opportunity to assemble with, you know, parents and the community members at that, in that forum, so that they can formalize their opinions about this issue and present them to us before that sunset date? Is that feasible, or is that too, is that timeline too tight?
It's pretty tight, because I believe the first meeting in June is after the 6th, which means you only have the May meetings to work with, and we only have one meeting in April because of spring break.
Right.
It's, it sounds like a long time, but it's going to go like a rocket.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and I, I just think the reason why we haven't gotten a lot of feedback is because of the way that the proposed ordinance is drafted. I think, again, that if we had a proposed ordinance that was going to allow it in Gaslight or reduce the buffers or something like that, we would have lots of feedback. I really think that we should take the absence of feedback as being an indication that there is not heavy appetite for retail sales within 1,000 feet of our schools in East Grand Rapids. That's how I read it.
Yeah, I would tend to agree. And because of that, it just eliminates, because the way our village was plotted out, it just eliminates all possibilities.
Commissioner Walters, I don't know if I agree with that interpretation, simply because the offline communications we've gotten seem to be roughly split. I haven't counted them up, but there are, there are several of them in favor and several opposed, so you might be right. I'm just not as confident as you are.
I guess I've just, I mean, I've only been on the commission for two years. I've seen other issues that were hot-button issues where we have standing room only in the room because there are people who are concerned about the direction that the commission might be preparing to take on an issue, and we're not seeing that tonight. And so I can't guarantee that that read on that is right, but I think that's the read that I take. So I think we should call the vote.
Yeah, I think we should. So let's be clear, we are voting on the extension of the moratorium still. That is what's on the table, to extend to June of 2021. That's what we're voting on.
I heard 24 months.
My motion was for 12 months.
Okay.
Commissioner Hextall originally proposed 24, and I heard somewhere else 6, so I decided to draw something in the middle.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Real quick clarification, so are there actually two votes on the docket right now? Is there just the one that has been modified?
I believe it's just the one that has been modified.
It's just the one that's been modified. I mean, obviously, if that does not carry, then you could
Then we do the next.
You could have a different vote
Yeah.
On a different approach.
Yep.
But the only thing you're changing is the effective date at this point. And really, that's all you're talking about anyway, because we're not talking about any changes to the body of the ordinance under any circumstances.
So the ordinance is, would still be the same, you're just changing the sunset date?
From 2020 to 2021.
Moving the sunset date.
Okay. Are we ready to go to a vote? Okay, so all those in favor of extending the date, could you please read the motion again, just so we're very clear?
Sure. I move to extend the temporary expiration date of the ordinance proposed from June 6, 2020 until June 6, 2021.
And we had support from Commissioner Hamrick, correct?
Support that, yep.
Okay. All right. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no?
No.
No.
The tie, it fails.
Okay, so we can consider another motion now?
Yep.
Okay. I'll move to approve the ordinance as presented in the agenda packet to remove the current expiration date of June 6, 2020 from the ordinance.
Can I get support? Second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion on that? No? Okay. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes. All those opposed?
No.
No.
So that fails, so you've done nothing.
Okay. Well, we don't have a seventh.
Right.
So
So
That's new.
Your defense has written with the sunset, right? Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you can continue to deliberate this evening, or make a third motion, or you can put it on the next meeting. You'd have a commissioner absent who
Yes.
Potentially would vote for either one of these.
Yeah, I think it just needs to be moved to the next meeting, unfortunately. I think that's the way, at least as a first step, and see where we stand with the full commission.
Yep. I think I would agree with that.
If I could just say one thing, since you voted now, I feel I can talk. I would suggest if we revisit the moratorium issue, that you go out, the 24-month is, to me, a much more realistic deadline. If you think about the possibility of adopting an ordinance, that's going to take a six-month period. You're really only buying six months before you got to get there, which means you have to get to work right away. It really isn't much of a delay at all, and it's not going to allow that much to happen. So I would encourage you to consider, if you go that route, to using a longer timeframe.
Just informally, if that motion were amended to extend it 24 months until June 6, 2022, would that, would anybody have feelings about whether that would change anything?
It wouldn't change my vote.
I don't think it would change mine, because I think it's still, I think we can still informally do the same thing that that formal process would do. And, yeah, I think that's all it's about.
Yeah, I agree. I think that it's been clear that everybody's willing to have the conversation, and that if something were to change, we would absolutely do that organically without having to have something concrete written down. So I don't, I don't believe it would change mine. So, okay, so are we?
Next agenda.
Next agenda item. Okay, moving forward. Two, agenda item number eight, extension of amortization agreement with Municipal Employees' Retirement System of Michigan, introduction by Karen Michonne.
We've also been talking about this one at a workshop in various meetings. What's before you tonight is looking at extending our amortization period with our current pension provider from six years to 10 years. We have talked about this a lot, and I know it's getting late, so I'll just open it up for questions.
Does anybody have any questions?
I guess I would just, really quick, just add, as part of, what Karen noted, as part of the conversations of kind of our short-term and long-term approach to the proposed defined benefit pensions that we have, this is the first step in that short-term approach, and that we are actively working, will be bringing forward to the City Commission, a recommendation based off of an independent actuarial analysis done for that longer-term approach. So this is that, this is the first step in that process to make sure that we're addressing this for the long term.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments? No? Thank you very much.
Do we need a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, sorry. So can I get a motion?
Go ahead.
Oh, I was going to say, I move to approve the extension of amortization agreement with MERS.
Okay, can we get a second?
Second.
Okay, and a vote. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, so next we go to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. And let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed? Motion carries. So lastly, we have, we will be leaving and going into an executive session, and there is not going to be any decisions made, so we will not be coming back into chambers. So can I get, we need to go to roll call, vote on this, right? So can we get a motion to go into the executive session?
Move to move into executive session.
And a second?
Support.
Is there a reason, a reason you can give for going into executive session?
Yeah, it should, it should have been probably part of the motion. I appreciate that, Mr. Nap, as to discuss pending litigation, or Section 8C of the Open Meetings Act is the exception that we're, would be invoking.
Commissioner Walters?
Yes.
Commissioner Pakla?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Hextall?
Yes.
Mayor Favalli?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron Sors?
Yes.
Okay. The meeting is adjourned.